Town of Moorestown, Plenary Moore, September 11th, town session. Please rise for the class.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand, uh, stand just for a moment and just, uh, our respectfully, my level. Thank you very much. Uh, it's what I brought to my attention that there may be a lot of concern here and it's respect to the proposed local law amendment for Western Highway. Um, I don't know, I, there was a lot of thought that people interested in this. This board will do nothing, all we're gonna do is refer it to the town board for their decision. So we're not gonna make any decision on it. So if you're here for that, so you don't have to wait till the end. That's basically what it is, but we're gonna refer it to the town board. Okay? Uh, next is South Moorestown Ambulance Corps. Is he, are you guys ready or should we go to the next one?
Uh.
He's been earlier, you wanna do it?
Anybody have a question? Excuse me, anybody have a question about what you said?
So the, the last one we just spoke about did not talk about the.
Not at all. No talking, no public input, nothing.
Yeah. Okay. Everything is gonna be referred to the town board for their determination. Okay? You look like you're shooting darts at them. I'm scared up here.
Come to that yet, okay? They must be important.
Well, I didn't want you to sit here for, you know, all the interviews for me to tell you.
We appreciate it.
Kinda I'm tired of looking at you, so get out. Okay, uh, let's move on to the next one. So Blue Hill Plaza Tree Remediation Plan.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, see you guys later. Alright, so we'll have to make it quick, 'cause I don't wanna hit the on.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, House of the Board, Town Staffs. Neil Schrute, Department of Law, Department of Labor, Department of Defense, on behalf of Cory's son, Cory Plaza. I'll be here, please, for the final approval for a tree remediation. Uh, this is a tree remediation that we had completed already. Uh, just, probably in the background. We had initially pulled, uh, we had paid for a tree removal from the back in, uh, February 18th.
Just tell them to take it down the hall, please. If someone's trying to get in, they have to go up, don't be.
It locks.
That, that's a great feature.
So yeah, so we had, we, we applied for a tree removal permit back in November of 2022. Uh, roughly a year later, we did the work and we replaced the trees apparently because we had some trees that were leaning over, that collapsed, came down. Unless, as you know, some of you may know, there were also vehicles that were stored by car dealership on that site. And then we gained, they were coming out of those cars. So we did all that work, replaced 207 trees. And it was dealt from Cory's son, uh, Blue Hill. So we do all that work. We subsequently realized that we needed approval from your board to do that. So we're here tonight, we did the work already, we planted trees. Again, it's like, for like, replacement of 207 trees. And all the work's been done. And we didn't put, apply for the permit back in '22. About the work's done in 2023, but we, your board approved it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Consultor force. Uh, Project Review has no additional comments. Office of Building Zoning Planning, Jane Slade, September 10th, has no comment. The Department of Environmental Management Engineering Union, September 10th, Ms. Peters, has no comment. The Bureau of Fire Prevention, August 19th, 2024, they have one comment. Rocket County Department of Planning, September 4th, they have four comments. Uh, I have a letter. Malcolm Gaddy, um, David, August 23rd, 2024. There does not seem to be any gas facility conflicting with the cause of work. Off code 753, rules must be followed. And I have a short EIA report. Three days. David, uh, September 10th, 2024. I also have a letter from Rocket County Planning, dated, uh, August 12th. Comments attached. I have another letter from Rocket County Planning, August 12th. Uh, consenting, uh, Town of Moorestown Planning Works Service Lead Agent. I have a letter from Moorestown DVA, dated September 4th. Consent in Town of Moorestown Planning Works Service Lead Agent. Another letter from Moorestown DVA, September 4th. No comments at this time. Do you have anything else?
None.
Thank you very much. Andy, questions, comments?
I have nothing. No questions.
Thank you very much. Lisa, questions, comments?
No questions.
Mike, questions, comments?
At this point, I'm not sure the area corrected the.
We corrected the right, after the county comments, we corrected answers to the front of the 12A, 12B, 13 and 15.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just, you know, I did review this EIA and I made comments to them that they need to revise as well, and we received that.
Oh, okay. Can he say?
Nope. You want to say it?
Nope. Uh, motion open, motion open up to public?
Motion open up to public.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye. Any opposed, none? Okay. Uh, motion for final with conditions?
Motion for lead agent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion for lead agent?
Motion for lead agency.
Second. All favor, aye. Any opposed, none? Okay. Uh, motion for final with conditions?
Motion for lead agent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion for lead agent?
Motion for lead agency.
Second. All favor, aye. Opposed, none? Motion for Nick Deck?
Motion for Nick Deck.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Motion for final with conditions?
Motion for final with conditions.
Conditions are aye. Office of Building Zoning Administration, Jane Slade, September 1st, one comment?
That is satisfied.
Which is satisfied, but I still have further. Department of Environmental Management, September 10th, one comment?
Just note that comment, there's no comment.
Correct. I just, I just wanted.
Whatever you're gonna pay for it this way, nothing to mess up.
I hear conditions, I start to shake a little bit, so.
You're gonna get another one right here. Bureau of Fire Prevention, August 19th, one comment? Department of, uh, Rocket County Department of Planning, September 4th?
Number two is satisfied.
Okay.
We've divided the area.
Okay, well, we're gonna put it there, but it's been satisfied. Because we're not over.
Yeah, we've been satisfied in housing, so no, no need for a request.
Okay, that's it. We'll have a second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, have a look here. Okay, next, uh, I have the South Moorestown Ambulance Corps, Slide 24-36. You know, put it in your face, it's a.
Yeah.
Did you go to the other guy on the stairs for that?
Here.
Peter Rhoimishr, love it.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, can I help you out?
It's been a long haul.
Did you see it? Yeah, first. What's on it?
It's been a long haul. I think we started in 2018. Uh, appropriate date today for this, we have a final approval. We've been to the planning board, zoning board, act of work, and now we have.
Thank you, sir. Let me go through the consultant reports. Okay, Project Review has no additional comments. Office of Building Zoning Planning, Jane Slade, September 10th. She has two comments. Department of Environmental Management Engineering, Town of Moorestown, September 10th, Ms. Peters, has eight comments. The Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Moorestown, September 19th, they have one comment. Booker Engineering, September 10th. Significant information has been provided to demonstrate that, oh, that's, uh, yes, okay. Uh, significant information has been provided to demonstrate that potential significant impact with respect to drainage can be mitigated. Therefore, recommended South Moorestown Ambulance Corps Slide Plan and Restock Division to be approved with drainage so that it can be involved in project contracts or no. Sign bits. Still waiting, wait, no.
Uh, it's thirty.
It's there, no, okay. Okay, Rocket County Department of Planning, August 14th. They have fifteen comments?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna need an override again. The planning board accommodated us at Open Road, number two. And it repeated that same comment. And it says the town must monitor the site for the overflow parking, et cetera, et cetera. And we asked for an override, uh, prior to that, and, uh, they're granted it, but they put that same comment back in.
We did that once before, right?
Correct, yes. Do you know in the old decisions, what the verbiage on that was, why they put it back there? Do we have any idea?
You know why they put it back in?
Yeah.
They do that on every project?
No.
You typically do that twice.
Alright. Let's take care of it.
I have, I have a word. Well, okay, let's, that's the one. Can I have a motion to override number two of Rocket County Planning Board's decisions?
Mr. Chairman, I think we need the public to speak before you concern.
Okay, alright, fine, okay. We'll be back to this. I'm sorry, thank you.
You had one clause.
I know, it's, it's crazy. Okay, Rocket County Health Department, July 22nd, they have one comment. I have a letter from Michael Di Minulo. As this is nowhere near any of the county parks, Rocket County Parks Commission has no comments. That's dated, uh, June 11th. Okay, and. Okay, I have a letter from Rocket County Planning, August 2nd. Comments attached. That was, that was already, I'm sorry. And that's it, do I have anything else?
No, I believe that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any questions, comments?
Not really. I like the, uh, like the landscape plan, it came out pretty good. But that's, that's, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Do you say anything?
Yeah, no, don't come out.
Okay, the EIA, that been revised.
Yes.
This is what they, was they had it from Rocket County Planning. And number seven says it hasn't been revised. And comes, it shows back to, uh, planning board decision 102523, also, which did. Number 1223, EIAF, still containing the errors. Number three, number two. Quiet down there.
Sorry. You're saying that they were errors? I'm not seeing that.
That they should've been. I don't think, yeah.
It just, to me, that says the planning board must decide about the 2019 EIAF, it's still applicable.
Right, applicable, but there have to be two cha, there have to be two changes, I think.
Ah. I don't know, it's left here.
Numbers 12, B and 20.
The EIA?
Yeah, I'm sure the EIAF should have marked this. It has got our decision 102523. And, uh, County Planning, number seven, which is the current one, so it has to be correct.
Okay, we'll correct.
Okay. Is 12, B and 20?
Yeah, so, uh, 12, B is located in an archaeological sensitive area. At least they wanted to check, yes?
Yes, I think the EIAF map shows that.
And then 20 has a site that proposed action or adjoining property, then the subject of remediation for hazardous waste, and that's which, I guess?
Yeah. Very cool. Okay. Now, um, the vice site plan, five, 23, 24, shows, uh, six foot high white line of fence to replace the current one, along the property line. And a crucipal fence, uh, that's going to reduce the noise from the generating area. What exactly, uh, are the crucipal fence properties? As noise reduction, because we didn't get, or at least I don't have manufacturer's specification sheet?
That was really an accommodation to.
Yeah, because of the generator there, and that's where you brought that up at the last meeting, we were, with the South, uh, Moorestown Ambulance Corps. As you see, put it in there, the crucipal fence is put in. Uh, and said, big, sixteen or twenty feet long.
Yeah, right behind that section of the generator.
Right.
Um, it's a, it's a sound attenuating treatment that attaches to the fence. And this was built and suspended because we actually met with the neighbor who had the problem. And we, uh, we put in a new white line of fence, it's all went around the entire property, uh, including the back of the, of both parking.
Right, and the one section had social attachments to it.
Social attachments to the fence. I can provide this, but I don't have to, uh, provide those parts.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering, like, that's the, well, the production.
It's used along highways.
Okay.
And so it does, you know, like a board-on-board fence, and then it attaches to the wood fence.
Alright, I'll, I'll, I'm sorry about that. Okay, and the neighbor there, right, uh, he has no problems with everything down. I think it's, uh, moving along, as far as that goes.
As far as I know, they've satisfied him, they've met him in the field, so.
Land state plan looks great.
Yeah, that was all patented after the meeting with the overall president.
Alright, and I think we brought that up toward the last, uh, meeting. Okay. Nothing further this time.
Thank you very much. Can he say it?
Okay.
Who say it?
No, not me.
Um, you have a motion open up to public?
Motion open up to public.
You have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who should speak on this application? Well, you guys are all here from the Ambulance Corps. One more time, anybody from the public who should speak on this?
Motion open up to public.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Okay, uh, motion for lead agent?
I think you brought, you got your name, so maybe you can reaffirm.
We have to reaffirm.
Motion to lead agent? Motion to lead agency.
C, well, I'm sorry.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Um, motion for final with conditions?
Motion for final with conditions.
Okay, and the conditions are aye. Office of Building Zoning, Jane Slade, September 10th, she has two. Department of Environmental Management Engineering, Town of Moorestown, September 10th, Ms. Peters, has eight. Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Moorestown, August 19th, they have one. Booker Engineering, September 10th, we have four. Okay, uh, Rocket County Planning, August 14th, has a total of fifteen, of which the applicant wishes to, uh, get rid of number two, which has been done in the past. Uh, I have a motion to override number two?
Motion override number two.
Okay.
Second.
Mike, did you go into the re-reading? Okay, I'm just looking for the reason why we overrode it.
Yeah.
But.
Uh, we just, we had two motions.
Oh, okay.
So, um, we're confirming that we're going, gonna go with versus on that, on this one.
Basically, we've overridden this twice before, and it keeps coming back, so can that be our reason?
Well, I.
No. That's why I was hoping to find a version of the old, the old petition.
I can give you some.
Okay, please.
That there is a, an additional parking area in the south of the project that has been, uh, designed after the houses that's there is going to be removed, for a total of an additional fifteen spaces. And there, the other discussion was that it's an extremely wide right-of-way pavement-to-pavement so that there is parking space, uh, if there was an emergency, for instance. But that this, the ambulance corps has functioned properly and there's adequate parking has been provided.
Thank you. Can you put any addition to it? What's your comment? You have a second?
Second.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yep. Alright. Okay, so we've overridden number two. So Rocket County Planning has fourteen. The Rocket County Health, July 22nd, has one. And that's it. Please have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Got your final, sir?
Okay, I have a little moment. Just a moment. It's been a long haul, but I wanna let, I, I would, I think somewhere along the way, I wanna thank you, Paul. Because when you led me, you used to be chairman. We had the horrible thing of 9/11. And you left the board's chairman, worked on it for you and him. And came back, and I think the Ambulance Corps liked it.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much.
As would be all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are doing a great job. Alright?
To what Don said, Tom, you've been a big help on the project, as, as a lot of you on this board have. The Ambulance Corps really appreciates it, and we're, we hope we're around for a long time to serve.
We do too, you guys are good guys.
And we really believe this is gonna, the benefit.
No question about it, no question about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks for holding the door open for us.
No problem.
Thank you for coming.
Next is Onyx Equities Site Plan, EIAF 34-38. Did you go by yourself? Did they let you out by yourself this time?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
How you doing?
Good?
I wouldn't try to do this without you there. About to create a presentation there, I'm gonna give you this quick.
Give it a couple next time, we still have hallways.
That's why I need to be tied to her as well, and that.
They've been working hard to get this project through, so they're, they're entitled to celebrate it.
Oh, yeah.
It was a long haul. Yes, sir, we're gonna help you out.
Good evening, Seth Mataldowne, with McCullough Goldberg and Stout. Uh, here on behalf of Onyx Equities and Rivian. Um, this is regarding property at 64 and 140 Libra Road, which is part of the Hudson Crossing Industrial Park, formerly known as the Bradley Court Park. Um, here with me this evening is Rob Fruit, Principal Dynamic Engineering. Uh, we also have representatives of Onyx and Rivian, uh, in the audience, as well as, uh, Rob's colleague from Dynamic. This project was before you, back the first quarter of the year. It's for an accessory parking lot to work in conjunction with the service center for Rivian that you approved last year, which is now, I'm pleased to report, open and operating. Um, as you may remember, Rivian are electric vehicles that customers order online. And then, when they're ready, they come pick them up at 800 Bradley Court Road. That also is where they bring them for, for service, although EVs have a lot less fluids and moving parts, so they don't need as much service as a traditional internal combustion vehicle. This parking facility received preliminary approval from this board and an A deck back on March 27th, as well as final resubdivision. As you may remember, there were two lots that are being merged. So no new lots are being created, actually, it's one less lot. Uh, but they're all owned by Onyx, and Rivian is Onyx Class C. As part of that original approval, uh, you waived Akabor, because this is just a parking lot, there's no buildings or the structures. Uh, you overrode certain Rocket County Planning Department comments, which have come back again. Uh, so we'll talk about that a little later. Uh, and you sent it over to the town board for a water course diversion permit, and the zoning board appeals for several area variances. Uh, I'm pleased to report the town board approved the water course permit on May 21st. The zoning board granted, uh, several area variances on June 5th. And we are back here requesting final site plan approval, uh, subject to any outstanding comments. Uh, what I'd like to do at this time, as I could, is ask Rob to take you through the updates to the plan since March. Uh, there have been, uh, some, some changes related to stormwater, some field testing that, uh, Department of Environmental Management required. Uh, we did result in some changes to the plan. Uh, but at the end of the day, it's still a proposed accessory parking facility, just the stormwater is being handled a little differently. Um, and Rob, if you could just, um, remind the board of, uh, the enhancements to the landscaping uh, that will require as part of preliminary, as you take it through, uh, the overall plan. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Rob Fruit, uh, with Dynamic Engineering, for the record. Uh, what I have on the ESO is an overall site plan rendering, uh, showing, uh, the area that we are proposing improvements on. Uh, it is the combination of Lot 50.40 and Lot 47, uh, which together, after the resubdivision, is 13.18 acres. I won't go through all of the detail, I'll focus on the changes, uh, since preliminary. Uh, but as you recall, the site had, uh, two access points, or two, uh, connection points to Libra Road, I should say. Uh, those during preliminary and during variance discussions, uh, we agreed that we would not, uh, propose any connections there. All of the access comes internal from, uh, the site, both on the, uh, west side and on the east side, coming up into the site. Uh, as you may, may recall from the testimony, uh, significant grade, grade change, this, uh, area of the site of the, of the campus, if you will, sits up, it's about 25 feet. This area, uh, where we're proposing today is about 25 feet above the loading area of the distribution center below. Uh, with that, there's gonna be a wall that's, uh, about 16, 15 feet high. Um, and, uh, of course, the accompanying, uh, stormwater management measures. Uh, since the preliminary approval, um, we, uh, have been reviewing the review letters from, uh, Mr. Peters and addressing comments, updating the SWIP. Uh, part of that was to do some additional testing on site for the soils. Uh, what we found out there, uh, which wasn't necessarily a surprise, but there is, uh, some bedrock in that area. Um, and what that did was slightly modified our stormwater design. Uh, so what we've done with the stormwater design, uh, it originally was an all-underground infiltration basin under the parking lot. Uh, we modified that to reduce the size of the underground, uh, along the north, uh, parking road there. Uh, to be the underground, it is now. To be the underground, it is now, it's an underground detention system. And there is, you can see the lighter shade of green here, is a stormwater planter that satisfied the runoff production requirements of the, of the GO. That's about eighty-two hundred square feet there, that will then overflow into the underground detention system. And as with the previous design, that system will be underground and overflow to the existing infrastructure that exists along the west side of the campus, which is where all of the stormwater goes today. We're just managing it, mitigating it before it gets there. Other changes were at each of the driveways. We have modifications to the grading design to put a slate ground in the road, to push the water towards the curb, to allow us to collect it in inlets on either side of those driveways, and then for additional water collection before it gets off the property. Those are also managed through water quality measures as well. So all in all, we have done these in response to Mr. Peters' letter. We believe that we have addressed all of the critical design elements, we did just receive his updated letter. We did have some dialogue with him at the PRC meeting earlier week. He brought up some probably believable technical comments, which we have no problem. We're very comfortable addressing as conditions, and we'll work with him through that moving forward. In all, by addition of the above-ground planter system, the total parking on the site went from six hundred and thirty-three spaces down to six hundred and fourteen spaces. So, so we reduced the total number of parking spaces a bit. As you recall, we have breaks in the parking space throughout. As you recall, we are bringing water to the site. We will have a main extension up the drive and into the site that will serve two fire hydrants on site. We have a letter, I believe from a week or two ago, from the fire official confirming over the comments with regard to that. And- And so the other element is the landscaping, if you recall during the, the preliminary discussions, we looked signif- uh, in detail at the existing berm that exists on the south side of the property, backing up to the houses on Lieber Road. That's an existing berm with existing vegetation. We have a significant amount of additional landscaping being planted there. What you see with this line here, through that landscape berm, that's a representation of the notes on the plans that we will put that landscaping up into the berm. Is that, rather than just plant it on our open space on our side of the berm, we're gonna fill some gaps, fill some of the holes in the planting. It will not, at the end of the day, be a straight line as it's shown on the plan. We will work with the town's forester and find appropriate places within that berm. If there's a, a little bit of a gap or anything, we'll put plants in the right spot, so that, number one, we don't disturb existing vegetation when we dig the plant, and number two, visually, we're filling some holes in that area. So that's a significant effort to supplement the berm and screening there. I believe that's the, the significant elements of the changes that have happened since the preliminary approval of this board's own.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Bless you. That is our overview, happy to answer your questions.
Do me a favor, real quick, I know it's not hard, shine your laser on your map and then go onto the TV screens. We'll try to discuss if we can get a laser to work on a TV screen. Yes?
A little better.
Oh, just makes it.
The green, the green one works better.
Yes.
I have a green laser that works better than the green.
Rob, what's the manufacturer that, do you know?
It's just a laser butcher. It definitely has.
Everything's on Amazon.
Yeah, exactly. What, okay, green one, we'll have to give you green. Thank you very much.
We have to, at least they take the free returns.
Add whole foods for something.
Let me go through the soldier reports. Project review has no additional comments. Office of Building and Zoning Planning, Jane Slade, September tenth, she has two comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, September tenth, he has eighteen comments. The Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, August fifteenth, they have one comment. Booker Engineering, September tenth, the applicant has provided significant information to demonstrate that potential significant impacts with respect to drains can be mitigated. Therefore, recommended Onyx Equities LLC site plan be approved of drainage, subject to no comments. A letter from Rock County Department of Planning, September fourth, they have fourteen comments. No, twelve, I'm sorry. I have a letter from Rock County Health, August sixth, they have one comment. A letter from Rock County Highway Department, August seventh, they have one comment. I have a letter from Rock County Planning, Board, uh, July twenty-sixth, comments attached. And that's it, do you have any else? Okay, thank you very much. Oh, yes, I'm, thank you. I have a letter from McGoldberg and Brad, I'm sorry, LLP, July eleventh, which I'm gonna make note to. I have another letter from Dynamic Engineering, July twelfth, and that's it. Okay. Any question, comments?
The only comment I have right now is that the landscape plan looks pretty good. When you do that berm, you're gonna sprinkle a lot of evergreens in there and stuff like that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think with our last revision, we actually increased the percentage of, of evergreen significantly.
Okay.
Most of them, dear sister.
Please say anything?
Uh, I just have a question about Bruce's, no, comment number one.
Yes.
So that, I mean, that's the, the soil test that you're talking about when you found the bedrock? Or no?
We did additional soil testing, yes, to find the bedrock, yeah.
So he wants you to do another test, is that what that's what he's saying, wants to?
That, that's in every application, even, which says the same comment was in, uh, a similar comment was in the South Orange Town Ambulance Corps, I can read that one.
That's kind of generic.
Yes, Bruce would prefer, as with many complicated projects, that all of the tests be done and approved before final approval, but that's not been the standard practice of the board. If that's, it would have to be addressed prior to the signing and stamping of the drawings, so.
It has to go in the berm.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it had to be stamped with the plate, right, so.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to clarify if it was about that or not, so it's healthy.
Right, the, part of the issue is, these tests can only be done at certain times of year for drainage design, so, you know, you can hold up a final approval for six months, or you can grant final with the condition that they meet this condition. And if the applicant cannot meet the condition based on what they find, then they may have to come back, which has happened, as many as, three or four years ago, it happened twice to some complicated projects. I think one of them was Adams, was it Adams? One of them had to come back with the new design.
Yeah.
And in the, in this complex, so.
I have another question.
Mike, any?
Just a couple of, uh, just wanna confirm the, our decision, it's in there. Plainboard decision, three twenty-seven, twenty-four, page six, number ten, just to confirm, no E D charging stations, no tractor-trail parking, yeah?
Correct.
Correct.
Trucks come, drop cars, they leave, cars get charged, and they're prepped, and they help.
I just wanna make sure there's no change in that.
Correct.
And, uh, the landscape plan looks great, they have forty-one shade trees, two and a half plus inches caliber, five-one metals, eight to ten, two hundred and forty-five evergreens, six to seven feet. And note their supplemental plantings, uh, on berm will be adjusted, uh, working with the harvest from the town.
In the field.
In the field, so that everything is built in.
And those greens grow fast.
Yes, they do, yes, they do. Uh, just, just one question, in your letter, what you wanna talk about, the letter from McCullough Goldberg and Staub?
Go ahead, you wanna make?
Okay, dated seven eleven, twenty-four, page two, paragraph two, you talk about Lieber Road as a conservation easement in there. Is that, is that something that you're going to do, as a conservation easement?
No, no, we, we indicated, the chair and I asked that question back in the spring.
Yeah.
And I confirmed with my client, um, they have an equity partner, there's five minutes on this property, they prefer not to encumber the property with another covenant as a record. However, having it as a condition of plenty more approval is almost as good, in the sense, from an enforcement perspective. If it's in your approval and we violate it, Jane's gonna shut us down, because it's in your approval's condition of the site plan. But my client has a strong preference to not have that encumbrance recorded as a covenant against property if at all possible, since it would be enforceable through the actual condition of the site plan. So that's what I meant by that, by that paragraph.
Thank you, nothing further for this time? Okay, thank you. Did he say anything?
No, just, uh, just a quick understanding again, because it's been a while. So, the berm is existing, and, and just to understand, like, the, the general slope of all the stormwater will go, like, plan north, is that it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so like, the existing stormwater wash-off to any of the residents south of that will have no change?
That's correct.
Yes.
Everything on the south side of the berm stays exactly the same, and then from the berm down, the entire lot has a gentle slope that goes down towards, uh, the north into the collection and detention system.
Okay, alright, that's it.
Bruce? I have no questions. Okay. Can I have a motion open up to the public?
Motion to-
Public, for a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody from the public who wants to speak on this project? Can you step up and state your name and address for the record? And you use that-
I need the mic.
That mic right there, thank you.
Thank you. What's your name?
Yeah.
Uh, my name's Kirsty Tinto, I'm at sixty-
Wait, 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 you have to-
Sorry.
Great, and your address?
And I'm at sixty, six zero Lieber Road. And, so I just wanted to, thank you for raising that paragraph in the July letter. I just wanted to check with the board if the condition of, of the easement not being developed has been included or will be included in the application for today.
What, in respect to those two pieces?
Yes, exactly.
Yes, that's one of our concerns that was in the newsletter.
And, and is that condition being included?
It will be included, yes.
Uh, that's exactly what we wanted to, to be absolutely careful, because we need in silence here.
Yeah, no, that was one of the first things that, that this board had, had recognized, and, and I think the applicant did do the concern itself. That was addressed. Thank you very much. Anybody else have questions or comments? Okay, can I have a motion to close public?
Motion to close public portion.
For a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, okay. Motion for reaffirm secret, right?
Motion to reaffirm secret.
I'll second.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, a motion for final conditions?
I'll make motion for final conditions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and the conditions are, um... Let me look at this, I'm gonna get confused, I think, too much stuff, too much stuff. Office of Building and Zoning Planning, Jane Slade, September tenth, two comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, September tenth, has eighteen comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention, August fifteenth, one comment. Booker Engineering, September tenth, they have no comments. Rock County Planning, September fourth, they have twelve comments.
To the chairman?
Yes.
I, I, there are two of those comments we just wanted to check with the board about, a potential override. Number four and number nine. More number nine than number four, right?
Yeah, we, we talked about these both during the preliminary hearings. Number four, while they make the comment, we provide the truck circulation plans and show that it does have sufficient maneuverability. So, the board, whether you think it's an override or if it just is satisfied, I think in the preliminary, we-
It's a recommendation.
Cause the, yeah, it's totally a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, Mr. Chairman, and it provides a better itself.
He didn't make no comment to it, so.
Yes, because I think you brought through that with him, right?
Yeah, the first, the first override.
I think it might be a carryover.
Okay, okay.
But I know Dave, otherwise it would have been in Dave's comments, that his previous comments were not addressed.
So that's number four, number nine is another recommendation with regard to limiting impertuous coverage. We discussed this at the preliminary hearings, where we are permitted fifty percent, we're down to forty percent. We actually reduced that a little bit when we added, uh, the, the filtration basin. So, we feel that we've essentially met the, the intent there by-
Isn't that basically a green practice?
It is a green practice.
Yeah, which is what they're executing for in the comments.
So.
Right, and, and again, it's, it should be considered.
Okay.
I don't think that requires an override, so if it says must-
Okay.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure they don't get held up.
Right, that's right.
Okay, so we just wanna talk it through with you, with, having done that, it seems like we're, we're gonna override.
I think as long as you're satisfied, you're accurate, then, then I don't think there's a problem.
I, I can't see it to be an issue, if there is, then, you know, we'll address it at the time, and-
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the county engineer does not consider horse pavements as a, uh, renewable structure thing, they don't work yet.
Right. See, he, he does not like them.
They're a vacuum.
Yes, it's, it's become a, a big issue with them.
Okay. Rock County Health, uh, August sixth, has one comment. Rock County Highway, August seventh, one comment, and that's it. Going to this letter on from McGoldberg and, I'm sorry, I'm terrible with this, it's not-
McCullough Goldberg and Staub, yes.
On July eleventh. I just, I wanna reiterate this and put this in as a comment, because you guys had asked for it and, and were amiable with it. Uh, at the March twenty-seven, two thousand, twenty-four meeting, Chairman Warren asked the applicant to consider a conservation easement restricting the use of the two wooden strips of the property that connect to Lieber Road. As previously discussed, all access to the property will go through Hudson Crossing Industrial Park, and no access from Lieber Road, Lieber Road is proposed. The applicant proposes that board's final site plan approval include a condition to this effect. Enforced by the town to ensure that Lieber Road is not used to access the property. Okay, that's a letter from yours, Gosh, so you, you're all right with that, okay?
Yes, with the condition.
Yes, okay, I just, I just wanted to get that back in.
Okay, so we have to break the condition.
I, I thought I just did.
You said, is the condition?
Yeah. I put that in as a condition where you put that in.
It's a paragraph. It's a paragraph, uh, two, on page two of the letter from McCullough Goldberg and Staub, dated July eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
I just wanted to be clear, though, that it's not going to be a conservation easement or restrictive covenant, it's just a condition.
Correct.
In the book, thank you.
So should we take that little piece out that says, to ask the applicant to consider a conservation easement, should we take that out?
Right, because you're not considering that any longer based on this discussion.
Correct, but they're not, they're, they're not use, they're not considering using that as an access, but they don't wanna make an easement out of it.
Right, so the condition would be that as part, part of the planning board's final approval, that cannot be used as ingress or egress access.
Correct. So then the verbage conservation easement out of that paragraph will come out. Basically satisfies everybody. Okay? Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Congratulations, sir.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, okay. You got some extra work?
Want to save everyone?
Yes, thank you.
I live on the other east.
That's mine.
No, that's Rob's.
No, it's Rob's.
I think the referral from Coach Law, I think we already addressed that at the end of the meeting, so that's done, right?
You have to refer to the...
Yeah, you should go on.
Motion to refer, propose local law, then town zoning map across the north, 676 and 680 Western Highway Gold Belt. Do you refer to the Town Board's legal agency?
Second? Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. It's an abstain because I didn't have the paperwork at the time.
Who made the motion?
You made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion.
But you also abstained.
Yeah, you also abstained. Oh, okay. Okay. Somebody else make a motion? Okay. Lady referral for General Mrs. Law from the Georgia Brand Year. Admit local zoning laws with regards to temporary structures. Why wouldn't we want to look at that?
It's an adjacent municipality.
Do you have a?
It's an adjacent municipality.
It's gonna be referred.
It's an act of, of local termination.
Local termination, same thing.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
And again, this is part of the GML requirements from the county. So, same thing, we, we need to refer out to adjacent municipalities based on location of certain projects.
Okay. Okay, that's it, right?
Your minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any questions or comments on the minutes? From which page is that?
WPT.
Yeah.
Huh? WPT.
Yeah, we started more than a minute.
What's the date?
Oh, July 24th.
Motion to approve minutes from July 24th.
With the corrections.
With corrections and comments.
Her, her, the final second when it was circulated.
It was circulated, right? Because that went around quite a bit. There was some change, you know, a lot of us had changes.
Yes, and it was finalized for...
Okay.
Second.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bond, all favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I abstained. That was not a meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
Not nothing else.
You gotta see, you have to say something.
There's a porch to knock, or we'll put down shaking head.
There is nothing else.
So let's see what she's not looking at you. She doesn't seem shaking head.
Great, does Don have something?
Motion to, motion to adjourn?
Those chairs are real comfortable.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Uh, nice.